Hello all of yous and flexians, my name is Mercarosis and welcome back to Deadly Premonition, Episode 11. In the last episode, we controlled time and spoke with Olivia in the diner. And now we get to go into the community center. I would also like to say that I tried playing this game like eight different times. And the game kept crashing before it even loaded into the save. So what happened was I had to go into the actual settings in my computer. And now I'm running this game in a Windows 98 slash me compatible mode. So let's, let's do this. It's the same quality, it's just... Running different. Let's see. Yep. We also made a joke about the clock tower because we started watching this and then I skipped through because... It was time to end the episode anyways. Now hopefully it loads. That's a good sign. Before it wasn't even loading. It would do that and then it crashes, so come on baby. Yes!
Zack, I haven't been on stage like this since elementary school.
Wow.
I'm not some tree in the wind this time either.
Oh.
That was a tough role. I was a piece of scenery. Bright red tree.
Huh, alrighty then. Oh god, George. Alright. Putting it all on me. But please, call me Peppermint. She's dead? What? Is that Tommy? The justice system is with us. Maybe. Depending on whether or not they confess here or now. Alright, so that's Olivia and that's Nick, her boyfriend helps spin. I don't know their relation, I think it's husband-wife. Please. If you all cooperate. Okay. Wait, how old was she? She was mid twenties, right? I believe so. That I don't remember, and that was Tommy. Don't, just... They're both like, "No, do not talk about this." He's just right down to it. Whoa, red stelatos. Who the hell is she? Carol McLean, bar owner and singer. Alright. She's even- Tommy, you have a sister? Hmm. She's a suspect. Don't do it. Just stay indoors. Even in lightning storms. Which is a good thing. How long will we be staying? Thank you. That's it? That's all you're saying? Oh, Tommy, he has something to say. Or is he reviewing our notes? Hey, he showed up. Guy from the hospital. I don't remember his name. Whoa, what the fuck? Why is he... This is our presentation, sir. You need to book in advance when the frickin' meeting is adjourned. I don't trust these guys. Not in a single slight bit. What the fuck? Mr. Stewart, what the hell are you going on about? Purple fog, y'all walking in hell. What? I don't trust him.
Sure knows how to steal thunder.
Oh shit. Yay, are we actually now playing? We are. Hello George, let's talk to you. I wasn't going to, that... That's all you had to say? Okay. Hey Tom, Tommy.
Agent York?
Yes.
Your words really made me think about Anna's death again.
Yeah, what about it?
How could one do such a terrible thing?
Easily, he's a sick-minded freak.
I'm still in shock.
I mean... Don't think about it that way. Cause I am not a sick-minded-
You don't have a tattoo on your back, do you?
A tattoo?
Yeah.
I do actually, but why?
Could you show it to me, please?
What? Now? Here?
Yeah.
Yes, please. This is vital for our investigation.
I need you to do this.
Okay, if it's gonna help you any.
Yes, just show me your tattoo, please.
Well, I'm wondering who G is now, but aside from that...
Oh, does he have a tramp stamp?
It told me that you didn't kill Anna.
Of course not. What are you saying?
Does he have a tramp stamp? Wait, G? George?
You ought to see that tattoo, Zack.
What is it?
A big heart with an arrow through it and "Love G" in the center.
Okay.
I don't know when he got that done, but... We've all been through the eighties.
Is it George? That's also the only G I know, so okay. Uh oh. Oh, it's you!
Quite a performance. Mysterious and very poetic. But I don't think many of your audience appreciated it.
I hate the mask. Who the fuck is he? What are you saying? What?
Find out why the town is soiled.
Um, okay. Okay, Jesus. Fair enough. Yep. Prover must do the proverb at the proper time. Yes. What is it? Stop with the poet.
So, Harry. You know something? But there's some reason why you can't tell me yet. Is that what you're trying to say?
Hello, George. Damn George, just give the man a break, he's in a wheelchair and wearing a gas mask.
Mr. Francis York Morgan?
What? The deadly premonitions. Sounds good. Thanks, Mr. Stewart. Don't know who Zack is, but... Oh, and they just vanished. Um... Hopefully nobody wants this coffee. Emily!
Agent York, are you finished asking questions yet?
No.
When you're done, let me know. We'll all get dinner.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Uh, observe, observe, observe. Uh, no relation to the case, I figured. Okay, now we go this way, down this side, observe, observe, observe. Damn it. Oh wait. Let's open this up, I saw suspects. Hello there, partners. Howdy, nice black spider.
You're York, right? I'm Richard Dunn, the owner of the darts bar, Swary65.
Hello, Richard. Nice to meet ya.
How'd you like the town?
Oh, it's great.
It, it works.
Aside from the murder that happened here.
Yep. Murder just doesn't fit with a small town like ours.
Well, Richard, I'll have to correct you on that. Crimes don't care about size.
Yeah, it's-
Big town, small town, just isn't a factor.
Yeah, it's literally just the individual themselves.
How did you know Anna?
I've known her since she was a child. She was the same age as my son.
Who's your son?
She always stood out, being pretty and all, just like her mother, Sally.
What do you know about Sally?
Well, I went all through school with her right here in town.
Okay.
I never thought our children would be the same age.
I don't see her here today.
Ah, well, see, she lost her husband and this time it's her daughter.
Morning.
She's at home right now, trying to make peace with it all.
You seem to know a lot. How long have you been in love with her?
Hey, hey.
Damn!
Don't go there. That scar of yours tells me you got your hands full too, right? Let's not dive into personal matters, it'll be better for you and me.
You're right, Richard.
Interesting.
Collecting gossip won't help with the matter at hand.
Yeah supposedly I got this scar from a cat or something, I don't remember. Alright, so Richard... Hello, suspect number two. You must be Richard's son. Why are there flies- Why are there flies floating around me?
But why does that bring the FBI here?
Okay, Quinn. Hello, Quinn. Must be his son.
Well, you know, man, this might just be another case to you. But it means the death of a friend to me.
Damn, sorry.
And I want you taking this lightly like it's just another case.
I will do my job perfectly fine.
I'm here to apprehend the perpetrator who did this.
That's right.
Because local enforcement can't shine their own boots, right?
Good point. You can't always count on the police now, can you? But that doesn't mean you're going to capture the perpetrator yourself. Quinn.
How do you know my name?
Cause...
I memorized the name of every citizen before arriving in town.
Damn!
I also know about you and your significant other.
Who is?
You mean Becky?
Oh, hey Becky. Who's Becky?
Don't underestimate the FBI. We know and see everything.
I'm... Sorry if I was a little harsh. I wanna help, I do.
So it is right. Why are the flies-
Okay Zack, I'll tell you how I knew his name. He's got a small Q on his hat. That was the only name beginning with Q that I could think of. He was even kind enough to tell us his girlfriend's name. I can read him like a book, Zack.
That is amazing. I mean, uh-uhm. Oh, they're flying, they are flying around. Why are they flying around me? I don't sting, do I? Profiling options, title. Let's see, what do I have for items? Oh, it's probably because I'm tired or something. Oh my god, I... Do have it. I didn't know I had one. Alright, just go away. We need to find a place to sleep and get cleaned up, take a shower.
Good evening, agent.
Hello? Oh, Brian the Insomniac. He's a gravekeeper.
Good evening, mister...
Brian. The gravekeeper.
Hello.
Brian.
Mister Brian.
Hello, Brian.
I like the retro look. Auditioning for Little Grave on the Prairie?
Oh...
Anna. Oh, she was... So beautiful. Too soon. Too, too soon to go to the grave. So sad, so sad.
Huh.
I totally agree.
I'm getting creepy vibes from him, but then again, we also have a fuck-ton of flies floating around our heads.
Were you close to her?
Hmmmm. Were you?
Anna. Her smile. So warm.
Interesting.
Blonde hair. So bright.
Definitely weird, I don't think that he's the killer.
I'm not excited about the idea, but... Maybe we should at least check it out.
How do I shower? Alright, the exit's that way, we don't wanna go that way. Yeah. Let's see what's through here. Anyone of interest? Oh, cigarette. You got cigarette? Oh, hello Carol. Don't mind the flies. It's, uh...
Anna was an airhead.
Oh?
What do you mean? Are you saying she was killed because she was an airhead? Or are you saying that she was an airhead for being killed?
I'm sure she's still an airhead, even in heaven. She changed her hair every day.
What?
If she lost a pound, she'd be ecstatic. Gain one and she'd almost be in tears.
Oh.
She broke many, many plates every day at the diner, and she'd always have a smile on her face. Always having fun. Everyone looked at her and knew she was a cute, adorable, loving airhead. But they would be smiling right along with her.
Red stelatos.
I wouldn't be surprised if the angels smiled with her too.
Whoa, what? Huh, interesting. Oh yeah, the two twins, right. Hey! Where the fuck you're going? Well, thank you for showing me that there's a thing right there. Maybe we can afford a shower now. We chase. Oh, it just loops. It's over here. Oh my god, it's Usha. Yo, Doc!
Agent York, you making any progress?
Not really.
Of course, plenty.
I guess so, nevermind.
Tell me, Usha, when is Anna's funeral?
That's still undecided.
Really?
Sally isn't really in any condition to do it right now.
Okay.
Her mother? I don't see her here.
Anna was her sole reason for living after her husband was deceased.
Oh.
She's probably huddled up at home.
Crying? Dying?
And I should probably take some time to pay her a visit.
Well, yes you should.
Oh, that probably is a great idea.
And I'd appreciate it if you could too.
Okay.
But don't go too hard on her, okay?
Yeah, no promises, but I'll try my best. Alright, and then Fiona. If I can get around fucking Usha. Hello!
Are you getting closer to catching the murderer?
Hi, and I guess-
Good to see you here.
Well, Doctor Johnson told me to be here.
Oh.
He said it would be important.
Well, that was good advice.
It was important.
He may be young, but he seems like a wise man.
Oh, and he's a very hardworking person too.
Is he?
Everyone thinks he's some kind of weirdo. But I don't think so at all. People don't understand why he's in the autopsy room all day.
Oops.
But I do. He's doing research to make the world a better place in the future. You know, he already made a fortune in LA with his career.
I did not know that.
He's literally standing two feet from us.
You didn't? Oh, the doctor is a very rich man.
Oh.
He has a really big house over by the lake.
Wait. By the mill?
Amazing, Zack. He must be loaded.
Hmm.
Rich and young. A perfect combination.
But you don't get that feeling from him at all, do you? He doesn't show it.
No, not really.
That's one of the things I like best about him.
Well, I could've been fooled if it weren't for you. Thanks for the valuable information, Fiona.
What the fuck? Oh, probably like he's embarrassed about. Alright, more suspects. Talk to you, Jim Bob. Oh my god, it looks like Bill. Are you Bill? From Left or Dead?
So you're the FBI agent, are ya?
The general. Alright.
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan.
Call me the general.
I'm the general. I fought for my country in the Vietnam War.
Were you a general or were you a sergeant?
So why are you living here?
Good question.
Soldier, this is my hometown.
Okay.
After a man returns from war, there's no place to go other than his hometown. Your little speech, you mentioned the raincoat killer.
Is that a problem?
You imbecile.
Wait, what?
The raincoat killer's no myth, not mere folklore, not a fairy tale.
Oh yeah?
It's based on actual events that happened in this town.
It is.
Oh, well, Joe already told me otherwise.
Can you tell me more about this?
You kids today don't even know how to ask for something right.
I just asked you. Tell me about the raincoat killer, please.
Soldier, if you wanna hear more, you come to my office.
Okay. So we get to speak to the general?
He literally exudes raw power, Zack. Despite the credibility issues, we should give him a visit. One thing though. Calls himself a general, but isn't that a sergeant's uniform?
Fucking called it! Called it right then and there. Alright, hello. Oh my god! Before we talk, don't mind me. We are going to put some items away. Nope, nevermind, we're not. Cancel. Cancel, back, take items out. Oh, okay, there's nothing in there, nevermind. Alright, now I can talk to you. Who are you? You look like a Cassidy. I don't know, you got nothing.
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan.
What's his name?
Please, call me York.
Wesley, owner of the gun store called Panda Bear. People around here call me the gunsmith.
Wesley the Gunsmith, it's like, okay, okay, I got that, hi Wesley.
Was there something you wanna ask me?
Um...
How do you make a living running a gun store in a place like this?
That's a good question.
I'd be worried because there can't be that many customers.
Worry gives a small thing a big shadow. I do gunsmith work in my shop too.
Oh.
If you got the skills, the customers find you. All you need is a network.
So you mean to tell me that you can upgrade it? Here's what I've got. Wait. I got a submachine gun, I have... Fucking lollipops, really? Flare, we have ammo. And we have it. We have it. Guns aren't just for killing people, I like to do...
You've got quite a selection here. No wonder people come from all around.
We also have a lot of lollipops.
Each day a customer paid me to go to Seattle for some help. I just got back.
I see.
Alrighty then.
Well, I'll be sure to visit your store sometime.
I definitely shall.
I'd like for you to take a look at my gun.
Understood, look forward to it.
Good.
The shop will be open again tomorrow. It's usually open from 2000 to 0600. See you then.
Wow, you're open quite late. Alright Wesley, well thank you. Hello Olivia. And Mike. Dot, dot, dot.
Can you tell me if you noticed anything strange about Anna before the incident?
Please.
I'm not sure if this will be of any help, but...
Any slight piece of information will help.
Well, you see, the diner closes when it rains.
Yeah.
Many shops do that around here, as you might have heard.
Yep, George told me.
Anyway, Anna always seemed unfocused the day after it rained.
Uh-huh.
And came in late too. It was almost as if she used up all her energy the day before.
Interesting.
To think of it, that was really strange. Did that legendary monster really kill her?
It wasn't a monster.
That's good information.
Just a criminal. Criminal I'm going to catch and bring to justice.
Or possibly kill, who knows? It might not end well. Hello, suspect of Nick. Your wife Olivia tells me a lot about ya.
I'm US Special Agent Francis York Morgan. I presume you are the owner of the diner that Anna worked at?
That's right.
Okay. Very, very small worded.
I'd like to ask you a few questions about Anna Graham. Did you notice anything strange about her prior to the incident?
Manipulative words.
Are you hiding something?
No, nothing.
No? Then speak up, please.
You sure?
I'm sorry, but I don't like repeating myself.
Alrighty then. Well, when you have information that is actually useful, then let me know. Um, okay, we're going to talk to the girl first and then we'll talk to Beepop. So she's married.
You're Isaac and Isaiah's mother?
Oh.
Yes, I'm Lily.
Hello Lily. Keith's wife, and you must be Keith. Wait!
I'm FBI Special Agent-
Wasn't that- Agent York, right?
You are good.
The handsome special agent from the big city. The facial scar trademark, the way you introduce yourself, everyone's talking about you.
Not only that, didn't we see her in a flashback with, uh, Carol?
But the way I introduced myself, Zack and I consider it a kind of ritual of sorts.
Okay.
Everyone has their own rituals.
They do?
It's like, always leaving the house left foot first. It's one of those things.
You certainly are a funny one.
You leave the house left foot first? Never heard that one.
So have you noticed anything strange or out of place recently?
Well, Becky's been taking a couple of days off from work, but aside from that, I heard she was in shock after the murder.
Becky?
But-
You think there's something else?
Oh, right, gun, fucking-
Well, I took the boys along to see her today.
Quinn's girlfriend.
She's always so kind to them and they love seeing her too, but she took in the boys and told me to wait outside.
What?
Something about a special secret between just the three of them. I just couldn't understand it.
I need to speak with Becky.
Thank you, Lily.
I have a lot of people to talk to, we got Sally.
Perhaps we should give Becky a visit tomorrow, Zack.
Becky? Now we have to speak with, or the general. And you must be Keith. Alright, please stop, you're-
Hey there FBI, I'm Keith Ingram.
Okay. Nice mutton chops.
FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan. Please, call me York. That's what everyone always calls me.
Okay, York, no problem, man.
So-
Please, stop.
I hear you run the Milk Barn Convenience Store.
I will shoot you-
That's right, man, rock and roll!
I will shoot you in the foot.
Do you sell raincoats there by any chance?
Yeah, but nobody ever buys them though. Anyone who wears one of them, I say, just ain't a rocker. But you know, that scar of yours, now that scar rocks!
This scar rocks? Now that's a new one.
Alrighty then.
I'll drop by your store soon and let's talk then.
Yeah, cool, man! Rock on FBI!
Yeah, okay, we're going to shoot him in the foot. Let's see, where are the, oh, hello Polly. Oh Polly, where's the hotel again? Polly, I need, I need your help, where's the hotel? Polly?
Mister Morgan, you're quite an impressive public speaker.
Really? Thanks!
Thank you, Polly.
You reminded me a little of a play I saw when I was younger.
What kind of play?
I'm talking about back when this place was still called the Mercury Theater.
Okay.
When I was young, I used to come here often with my husband, God rest his soul. We'd come on the weekend to see the latest play.
Yeah.
He'd always pretend to be uninterested, but I could tell he was excited inside.
Good to know.
He was just one of those kinda guys, really, thinking about it now.
Hey Polly, where's the, where's the hotel?
So what's your favorite play?
Oh, well, I like so many.
Uh...
There was one in particular, but I can't recall the name anymore. Oh, it was a very famous one too.
Something by Shakespeare?
Polly?
Oh, um...
Please Polly, just tell me where the hotel is.
No, nothing. One more bell that doesn't ring anymore.
Damn it!
I've always been forgetful about the ones we used to see anyway.
Instead of ring a bell?
Oh, and my husband would get angry at me for forgetting what we saw. He'd go on for hours retelling what the play was about.
I mean-
His eyes were so sparkling, like a happy young boy. His eyes were so sparkling, like a happy young boy.
I do that too.
So, what's your favorite play?
Oh, I almost forgot Mister Morgan, we're going to have another guest soon.
Oh.
I have to get back and get things ready, sorry for having to hurry away, I'll see you back at the hotel.
Wait, no, tell me where it is!
Zach, I think she could embarrass the toughest of the FBI's interrogators. She successfully avoided answering my question Zach, amazing.
Oh my god, where the fuck's the hotel? Alright, we're going to talk to these few more suspects. Hello? Why do you have a crock pot? Hello?
Oh my, my pot is getting cold.
Roaming Sigourney, the pot lady.
Hey mister, my pot is getting cold.
You are.
I'm sorry.
Who?
What are you saying, I'm Sigourney, Sigourney!
Okay Sigourney.
Sigourney, okay.
Jesus.
Now what is the matter, can you explain?
No time for chatting, I need to hurry, my pot is getting colder.
So go put it in the microwave.
Oh, you're useless.
Hey!
Zach, we've met all sorts today, but really, she takes the cake, amazing.
Okay bye Sigourney, and I know what time it is, but we're going to just talk to Jim and then the other two suspects and then save.
Jim, thanks for your help in the forest. How are Isaac and Isaiah?
Oh Jim, hey guy.
They really seem to love their grandpa.
Well I guess they do son.
Okay, thanks.
I wanna keep them away from the filth of the material world as much as I can.
Well you're doing a great job.
Which is why she lets me take care of them so often. And that's why I want you to solve this case quickly and go home.
Whoa.
Those rumors about that scar of yours do more damage than good around here.
Understandable.
I guess I reek of the material world, don't I? I have to in order to do my job.
Then it's true too, I am an FBI agent there, Jim.
I'd think the same if I was born in a place like this Zach.
Alright now let's talk to the other two suspects and then we will save. Hello there ma'am, with the cowboy boots, short pants and.
Hey, good looking, nice speech.
Huh. What's your name? Gina the Rose, Jack's wife, okay.
And you are?
Oh, I'm Gina.
Hello.
I'm married to Jack, he runs the gas station.
Oh the most important job.
Call me the Rose.
You look pretty revealing.
I can do that.
Oh, this old thing, you should see some of my other clothes, you.
No thanks.
Ooh now you are cool, that scar really is a turn on.
Please ma'am, keep your panties as dry as you can.
I'll give you a little extra service.
That would be great.
Um.
I can't believe how expensive gasoline is nowadays.
Yeah, by the way, can you?
Now about my current case.
Where the hell is your gas station?
What about the information on Anna, have you seen anything suspicious?
Oh, I don't know. Talk to my hubby about the difficult stuff, okay?
Sure thing.
This is getting us nowhere Zach.
Yeah, this really is, okay, hello, you must be Jack. Nice shades, nice.
I ain't got nothing to tell the cops.
Not a cop, FBI, kinda different, Jack the Raging Bull. Okay, hello Jack.
What about the FBI?
We are a different branch.
Shut up!
At least give me your name.
Fuck you.
I'm Jack, they call me Raging Bull.
That's a manly nickname.
If you want info, it'll cost ya, I only talk to Ben Franklin.
You know, first impressions are important. I can detain you for a few days and maybe you'll become more fun to meet.
You think I'm kidding?
Zach, this is a waste of time, let's go.
Alright, I'm with you and I'm not Zach. I wanted to save.
Agent Morgan? I'd like to let everyone go home now.
Oh Jesus.
Let's go outside.
Wait, let me save. Don't let me, okay, there, everyone's leaving. I spoke to every single person, I should, I should've said, I was thinking to save before talking to the last person just because of this. I didn't actually think they would actually initiate it as a cutscene. Hey Wesley, you forgot your gun save case thing. Okay, total time cleared, four hours fifty-two minutes total number of days, two. Okay. Payment rewarded, two sixty-five. Basic wage unpaid salary, okay, thank you. Save complete, thank god. Alright, can I end the episode please? It's a load, here we're going to end it, so I hope all you inflexians have enjoyed, and if you had, don't forget to leave a like, favorite, comment, share, and to subscribe if you have not already. Bock.
Well then Agent York, do you have any plans for this evening?
I was going to head back to the hotel and go over my notes.
Where's the hotel?
I need to contact HQ and give a progress report too.
Okay, then let's call it a day here.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Contact my office when you finish your report, we'll pick you up tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Diane, the owner of the art gallery, should be back soon.
Alright then, let's do that.
Hold on Agent York, we're going out to eat at Nick's diner, would you like to come with us?
The diner? That might be nice.
Thomas is a great cook, but Nick is the real deal. No visit to Greenville is complete without eating at the A and G.
A very appealing proposition.
Okay.
Zach, what do you think?
Oh wait Gina.
You can always go back to the hotel after eating dinner, or go directly back to the hotel, you decide Zach.
Ah, let's eat with them, fuck it. Alright, so we're going to eat at the diner. But hopefully uh we can also save and end the episode. No! Alright, this is going to be a longer one, I'm sorry.
I've been sheriff here for a long time now.
Have you?
And this is the worst murder I've ever seen.
Yeah?
Our town is a little odd in some ways, but it's usually a peaceful place.
Okay.
We had our fair share of cases, just the regular stuff.
Break-ins, thefts.
High school kids shoplifting from the Milk Barn maybe?
Okay.
Or some hot-headed kids fighting fueled on liquor?
That too?
Nothing more than that.
Oh my god.
Agent York?
What?
What kind of cases have you dealt with in the past?
Oh you know.
Not much different from those you've just mentioned.
I've also done a lot more murders.
The case I was on until last month, well, the guy killed seven girls in a three-month period.
Damn!
He sawed their heads off from the neck and took them back to his house, he cleaned the skulls up and used them as utensils in his daily life.
This is.
To eat from or as a urine cup.
Oh. Alright then.
He hated women, that was his way of dealing with it.
Alrighty then, sorry to ruin your diet, it's dinner.
He fills skulls with ice, cola and rum, then he downed it in one gulp. For him, that was a holy ritual.
Um, I would like to say that.
The question of his mental state was the pivotal point in the court case.
Everyone's losing their appetite. Sorry George, I hope you enjoyed that one plate of burger.
A hundred percent.
Yeah?
Drinking from the skulls, well that is one thing, but.
Yeah?
But those he had used to relieve himself.
Uh oh.
He would then just use them to drink from too.
Ow!
Yeah, that was too much for me, it's just not sanitary.
This is true.
Not sanitary, uh, that's probably not the problem for most of us.
Honestly?
Ah yes.
Eh.
An ingenious law school student raped over eight hundred victims, that was a nasty one.
Damn!
Thank you Agent York, now let's talk about something else.
You don't wanna hear anymore?
Uh.
That's a shame, isn't it Zach? I was just about to get to the good part too.
Sounds like you live in a totally different world, I mean you're like.
I'm Mercarosis!
An elite agent who just jumped out from a movie or something, in your eyes, we must look like we're just playing cops and robbers.
Little bit.
Ugh, I give up, I can't compete with you.
Probably not, I'm a whole new level.
Don't say that Emily. The cases you have solved are all full-fledged crimes.
I wish that we could just end this episode, we're ten minutes over.
There is no big and small. Crimes always have a criminal and a victim.
Ah.
No victim.
We already lit the cigarette though.
No matter what its size, so fundamentally, there is no difference in size.
Alright, can we uh end this episode?
Well said Agent Morgan.
Thank you George.
We work day and night to preserve peace and order in this town. You understand that, right?
Yeah.
Of course, but still.
Emily, stop prolonging this conversation.
I don't view shoplifting and Anna's murder as the same level of crime.
Me, neither.
Oh Tommy.
I never even dreamt that such a thing could ever even happen in this town.
Jesus Christ.
I just want expecting to see Anna here in this diner, waiting on tables.
Thomas, pull it together man.
Excuse us, Agent Morgan, we should've made dinner a more uplifting experience.
Eh, it's better than sitting at home.
Okay. Good night then.
Awesome, now let's go save, please, save, don't, no more cutscenes, just let me go out the diner, be on my own. So we can save an end in the episode. Please! Alright, back to the investigation, we need to solve this one real quick. Okay, wait, wait, we need to save. Where the fuck's the phone? There is a phone over here. Damn it, I did it again. Is this taking us back to the hotel? If so, I really, really need to mark it. But that's a thing for the next episode, for now, we're going to save. Ring, 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 ding, save, yes. Perfect. Alright, there it is, so I hope all you inflexians have enjoyed, and if you had, don't forget to leave a like, favorite, comment, share, and to subscribe if you have not already. But until the next time, stay sharp everybody, stay sharp, see ya!